On March 22 to order, thank you all for attending, members and the public. As the agenda lays out, this is another one of these added pub, public meetings by the planning board. To spend time with our consultant Jeff Lacy on his work on the natural resource protection zoning bylaw. And tonight, the focus was to be on the cottage era state part of that bylaw, which again was distributed by Christine and by Jennifer, I believe. And so Jeff, do you have any preliminary comments about that? About your recent work or do you want to dive right into the document? How would you like to proceed?
Well, I'll tell you how it, how it was developed, last meeting when I was with you. We, we discussed some particulars about the versions in the past, things that planning board members liked and didn't like, didn't like, and where you thought it might go. So I got some guidance from that, but I was also told it was okay just to run with it a little bit.
Yeah, Jeff, we have a question from somebody asking if you can, if you can post that document, the cottage era state document. I guess either share the screen or the person asked if it can be posted to chat. I don't, I'm not sure exactly what that means. Can you do one or the other?
Asking that you post it, Jeff.
You mean share screen?
No, just drop it in the chat box.
Drop it in the chat box. I'm not sure I know how to do that.
Sounds easy, doesn't it?
Okay. I'll, I'll do it, Jeff.
Okay, good, because you guys all have it, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, I think we do. Yeah, most of us at least.
Yep, I'll have it. I'll do it.
It was on the town website. It was on our, our.
Yeah. Let's see. Oh, good. You guys. So I, I have it here and I can, I, I have a version that has just a little more highlighting in it, reflecting some comments by Marie.
That's okay.
Would you like me to stick that one up and share?
Well, can you send that around? Can you drop that in the chat box, Jeff?
No, I haven't successfully done that. Let's see.
I just dropped your, I just dropped your draft three in the chat box, but if you can send around the one that you're working from, that would be great. Email is fine. You don't have to do it right now, but.
The, the documents that we're working off of tonight is called CEE combo, no format draft two.
And, and when it's printed out, it's titled H cottage era state adaptive redevelopment option?
That's correct. It's.
And what is?
That's part of it.
What is the date of that draft?
1921.
Three nineteen twenty-one. Thank you.
So Jeff, you're not using the draft that Christine sent around, which is file name draft. Number three?
No.
I'm sent, I, it was the three nineteen twenty-one draft I thought I sent out. That's what I printed out from what I sent out.
No, the, the, the draft I'm using here is, yeah, draft number three is actually the NHRPZ portion. Which I, I broke off from the CEE portion.
Well, the one, the draft, the draft number three that I'm looking at, I'm going to share my screen so you can see it because it does have the cottage era in it. Okay?
Oh, yeah.
So if you look here.
Yeah, that's not, that, that.
That's not.
That's not it. That was. How much does that have in it? Does it have a, a section H? Down at the bottom?
No, the H gets, no, the H is separate. The H is the newest.
It's dated, it's dated March 10th.
No. There's a March 19th. That is draft number three of the, the bylaws. And then we also got the cottage era estate adaptive redevelopment. That was through draft number one for the H. That's the H.
And that's what I thought we were reviewing tonight.
Yeah, that we got on three nineteen.
Well, this, Jeff, this has H in it. So is this?
That's, that's an old one.
All right. Why don't you let me share what I think we're reviewing tonight?
That's an old.
Go ahead.
Okay, here we go. Right there. And what is the date on that? Maybe, I, I don't always keep up with these dates. Three nineteen. It was actually finished on Saturday, which was 20. Yeah, it was finished on Saturday. So this is what I forwarded to Christine. And all it is, is H cottage era. And it goes down through, and I didn't put any of my comments off to the right because this bill can never read them. So I driving me crazy. So I highlighted in orange, in yellow, some areas that I think we probably should talk about. And, and then the red is something I just did this morning based on comments from Marie, a couple of, a couple of red places. Yeah, about three. So that's what I think, that's what I'm prepared to talk about. And that is the, that is the very latest of the CEE section H, which goes on the overall bylaw. It's the last section, A through H. This is H goes at the end. And this is if someone wishes to redevelop the cottage era estate under the overall NHRPZ framework.
Right.
This is where you do it. This is where you go. And the way, the way this came to be is I, I took all the comments and forward and, and formatting out of Joel's version and I put that up there and then I got a word version of your existing cottage era and I put that up there. So that was all my raw material. And then I, I played with it and played with it and played with it. And I also tried to to do what you folks had asked at the last meeting. When we had specific issues. So that's where we're at.
Okay, so Jeff, is, is it appropriate to ask you now or later? What are the principal differences between what the town now has, what, what section H now, how it reads in today's bylaw, in the existing bylaw? And yours? What, what are the key differences? If you can enumerate them?
Two I can think of is that the the law, well, well, one is that the planning board becomes the special permit granting authority.
Right.
Which is common. And number two, the, the protracted and extensive pre-application process has been shortened and simplified quite a bit. And actually what happens instead of having a preliminary sketch plan that then goes to a, a concept plan. Instead of introducing two new plans into the, into the mix, what I did was I moved the conservation analysis up. So conservation analysis is going to, it's going to be part of any of these projects anyway. And normally it's submitted with subdivision application or the special permit application later on. But here because there seems to be interest in a pre-application process, I decided to use something that's going to have to be done anyway, but just move it to the front of the process to the pre-application phase.
That's the conservation analysis.
That's conservation analysis and findings part. That's all moved up to. So there's this three required pre-application process and it has a pre-application meeting, the submission of a conservation analysis. There's review of conservation analysis, consultation with neighborhood and town. So this, I, I think this is a more efficient process for for us to consider rather than than the kind of multi-layered one that existed in Joel's draft. And it's something that has to be done anyway. And then let's see, I guess the third major thing is I looked around in here. First thing, I looked around in here for language that seemed convoluted or that I as a planner had a hard time figuring out what it meant. And I tried to get rid of it. If, if, if I after reading it three or four or five times couldn't, couldn't tell you what the public benefit of it was, then it went away. So trying to get some of that language out and it almost seemed like maybe that language had been added because of specific projects that seemed like it was language that you wouldn't have in a generally applicable bylaw, but you had some project before you. So you got some specific language that maybe just addressed one particular application. So try to get rid of that language. Looking here residential unit count. This is a big one. This was, was how this was how I took the thirty-eight, say, say, going back to the Desisto property, which we, I did a rough calculation with thirty-eight dwelling units. And what this does is convert that thirty-eight dwelling units to the number of allowed dwelling units in a cottage era proposal. And the way I treated the thirty-eight units was that that was going to be thirty-eight times four bedrooms equals, what is it? Hundred and fifty-two bedrooms? And then you have other forms of housing here. So you could apply those one hundred and fifty-two bedrooms that you would get to studios, two-bedroom, three-bedroom dwellings, four-bedroom, or dwellings of larger four, than four bedrooms. And, and that's what you got in residential density. And you could distribute it in any number of ways. Use it all up for single family dwellings or have two-bedroom condos or whatever, whatever you as a developer thought would work. But that's what you had, that you had those bedrooms. So that ties it into the overall formulas that are in the NHRPZ. Okay, we can talk about this more later because it's interesting. I and then let's see. Oh, there's another thing. Oh, how, how to determine what?
Just a quick question for you, the stuff in red?
Yep.
So that was added in after the March tenth draft?
I added it in this morning and it was based on Marie Rafferty's comment. Just to highlight things she had commented on. That's it. And it's just a couple of places.
Okay, can you, can you go over those, those areas? Because I'm looking at, I do have the March nineteen draft open now that Christine sent this weekend. But it doesn't have those red highlighted areas, of course, if you worked on it this morning. So you can, can you review those things? And that, that was Marie's input?
Yeah, Marie, maybe you can, you can help me here. I highlighted them because I felt they should be discussed. There was one issue regarding amplified sound from, you know, whether amplified sound.
Well, as I, yeah, as I looked at this, it's, it seemed as though there were a couple of places that there was a discrepancy in how this was described. Like one place said, you know, they could have amplified sound if they were doing an event, you know, and then on the other page it said, you know, no amplified music, no amplified sound. So I, I just was like saying, I think these things are not saying the same thing in this document. We need to say one or the other. And so Jeff has picked them out and, and highlighted them so we can talk about whether or not they they were like not saying the same thing.
Yeah, here's where it here's where they appear. Towards the end here, required additional special permit finding in order to grant the cottage era proposal, these findings have to be made. And I eliminated a couple of findings, but I kept most of them. Most of them here, there were a few that were duplicative, but there's one says, there shall be no outside broadcasting of amplified sound, including from under tents or other temporary structures. So it sounds like that that's a no, you can't do that.
Yeah, that's what I.
What, what page is that on, Jeff?
That's on.
Page nine, page, page five.
Five. Five at the bottom.
Yeah, it's the last page, last two pages.
But then.
Oh, yeah, the other one. Yeah, the other one was a town sewer thing.
Right. Let me just do one at a time, okay?
Okay.
So then, then where it next appears is in this great estate in business, which I have to ask you folks about because it seems like this little addition that was put on the end here. And then it, it says that the following activities shall require an additional special permit for the planning board based on a criteria of six point three. And one of those is outdoor amplified music. So what Marie picked up on is we have a prohibition up here and then we have an avenue to to do that down here in these greatest state in. So that was, that was your point, Marie, right?
Yeah, I just, I just thought we should say one or the other.
Okay.
You know, we should either have it by permit when we can, and that way we can regulate it and so forth. But if you have an event and it seems like depending where it is and all of that, you know, if it seemed like it was a good thing, we could give a special permit for a band for a wedding or something. I mean, I don't know.
I agree with the, with the outdoor events. They typically do come with amplified noise and I would just get them out of there. Most people don't want to live next to amplified noise.
That's what he's doing.
Great, thank you.
So here's the thing. Having it here makes it clear, no, wait a minute, you know, having it here makes it clear that you, there's going to be no amplified sound and that's not part of the permit, period. Down here, when you open it up again and great estate in, this makes it sound as though you can include that proposal in, in a proposal for a great estate in. The mic.
So then I would remove that.
Well, unless is, can you scroll down to the language again, under greatest state, outdoor amplified music? Yeah.
Special permit. You could get a special permit for it if we felt that was a thing in that particular case.
And, and people do. I mean.
The select just talked about that. Um, you know, really last, their last meeting, you know, there are times you get special permits.
So do you folks routinely issue special permits for, for like one offs like this?
Yes, not, not routinely say yes, but they, we get this planning board, I mean, the select board gets applications for special events.
And, and you actually do a forty A section nine special permit with the twenty steps and they notify the butters and.
No, none of that happens. And that's, I think it should be removed, Jeff, because this is a concern I have with much of what's in. Much of what we're talking about is do we actually have the, the resources to implement this? And this is a perfect example of that.
Well, this would only be for like the inn, if it's an inn and stuff. This is not just people.
That's not my point. Do you understand my point?
I, I didn't understand the differences between an inn and something that can have outdoor events is different than just amplified music.
Jeff, I just want to make sure, do you understand what I'm saying?
In, in, in both cases, it's outside broadcasting of amplified sound, not inside it. I'm, I'm assuming that you're, that, that inside sound can occur, but not outside.
Well, what, what's happening is that the, the select board is providing a permit for outdoor amplified sound. We have a select board member here, so he can potentially pipe up.
I don't, you know, the select board's business is the select boards. I don't think we want to debate whether they should be doing this or not. I think we're dealing with a planning board zoning bylaw. And if we want to restrict it amplified sound to indoors only, we can do that. And if owners or resident, you know, businesses want to apply for special permits, they can go to the select board and maybe they'll get it and maybe they won't.
Um, I guess I disagree with that. I think it should be with the select board. There's.
It is.
I'm sorry?
It is.
But you were just, as I understand it, you were just saying that this is something that will be with the planning board.
This reads that it would be with the planning board. As it is.
Yeah.
Well, Bill was saying if somebody wants a permit, they would have to follow the process that's now in place where the select board allows for amplified music or one-day liquor licenses. And so we probably wouldn't put it in the bylaw if that process remains in place.
So I.
That's what I heard.
What I'm, as what I'm reading here is that a permit for outdoor electro, broadcast music would be with planning board?
That's the way it reads here.
Yep. Okay. Thank you for confirming that. We, we should probably move on.
All right. So, so anyway, we may come back to this. My whole question here is you have this greatest state in and this doesn't appear to really be, this may not be completed. It was the tail end of Joel's work. And my, my questions are what, where did he get this idea? How is it different than hotel or resort that's mentioned earlier and up above? What were you thinking of here? Smaller parcels that could become in that didn't have a lot of land around them or? You know, it also says it has to be on town sewers. You're going to limit the, the locations of these. But what did you folks have?
That was my, that was my concern. There are places in town that will never be on town sewer. So I think we need to put in something like, or have a working septic system or whatever, because there are people that will never be on town sewer and many of them are the, the places that are, you know, that might be one of these cottage estate kind of era places.
Well.
Well, I think that's, that's a tough one in this town.
So Jeff, Joel had made the comment and I'd like your, your feedback on this, that unless you limit this to where there is existing town, town sewer, you will get sprawl. Can you comment on that, please?
Or what, what if they increase the, where the town sewer line goes?
And I think that what we agreed with Joel on was that if there was a title five system that could be installed, it's very difficult to say no under the state rules and regulations. Because there's really this whole issue of sprawl in a town as small as Stockbridge, when we have a major center up at Tanglewood that attracts hundreds of thousands of visitors every year. And then we have downtown. It's difficult to figure out the whole issue of sprawl, which is a much more urban concept. So I think the feeling is that if a, if there is the equivalent with a package treatment plant or another kind of system that can work and that is permitted by the state and the board of health, that that is the equivalent of a sewer. And in a lot of respects is better for the environment than the sewer.
Jeff, I still, I still want your feedback on, on Joel's comment because my memory is, is, is is different than Christine's of what Joel's input had been.
Well, it seems like, it seems like your, your CEE is, is linked to these estates wherever they may happen to be. I guess in the R two or the R four.
I'm sorry, your, your what is limited?
The, the, the CEE cottage era estate.
Okay.
Is, is indexed to the existence of these estate properties, wherever they happen to be. As long as they have a certain amount of acres and there's the historic commission endorses them as historic cottage era estates, then you could do something like this. And those, you know, the distribution of those in your town better than I do. So it's, it's not like you're planning where you're going to put all the cottage era estates. You're sort of following them around and where they happen to be. This greatest state in provision here is a little confusing because I'm trying to figure out why you have this here. And it's not just a hotel or, or resort from up above. Is, is this designed to be something different, like smaller properties? Maybe not in the R four or the R two. Properties that are, properties that are just on town sewer. So essentially more compactly located. I mean, what, can anybody recall what you had in mind, why this part was drafted?
I'm sorry to be late to this discussion, everybody. I, I thought we were at six thirty. So I'm sorry to be joining this late.
No problem.
But I, I, I think that part of what this great, I don't think this greatest state section is necessary. I think if we have it covered with the previous section. And I, I think this is redundant. I, I'm not sure this is something that is necessary.
You mean the greatest state in section?
Right. I mean, I just think we covered, we cover things with the previous language that this, this kind of redoes it. I, I'm not sure we need this language again.
And I think that's why Joel didn't go any further with developing it because there was a real lot of questions as to whether or not this was even necessary, or if it could just be covered in the main document. Yeah, that sounds right. That sounds like.
All right. Well, I'll tell you what, I crossed it all out unless we can figure out a good reason to put it back. Maybe it'll stay crossed out.
My recollection is that Joel knew of other towns that had such a section in their bylaws. And he wondered if we wanted it too. It was not. I don't think it was something any of the members of the planning board said, can you please put a great estate in subsection in here?
I think that's correct, Bill.
Yeah, I, I think you're right.
Maybe I'll call Joel and ask, and ask his opinion as to how this is.
Good idea.
All right.
Yeah, that's a, that's a great idea. Thank you.
Okay. One of the other things that's interesting, since we're still sort of doing the summary, is, is how these things are identified. Let's see, where is it? Okay.
So Jeff, we have a comment here and this is, I'd like to bring it up because this is something that's been on my mind. I always feel like we're approaching this backwards, frankly. And the comment is, how can you be writing these bylaws and not know where where the properties that you're discussing are? where the properties that you're discussing are located?
Mr. Chairman, do you, you want me to respond to that?
Please go ahead.
Okay. That's actually where we're at right now, eligible cottage era estate properties. And at the last planning board meeting, we were talking about having a list versus doing something else. And the, the current version, I think, and maybe even Joel's version refers to a list that would be pre-developed and probably put in this bylaw where you'd list the properties or maybe even identify them on your zoning map. This one here has a more ad hoc approach that we talked about last time and you guys wanted me to try to write it. So it, it, it says, "An applicant seeking a special permit under this subsection H shall first obtain an endorsement of the subject property as a cottage era estate from the Stockbridge Historic Commission. The planning board shall review the endorsement during the pre-application process and shall informally indicate to the applicant its acceptance or rejection of it." So you get the final say on whether this is, this is a historic estate. But it's got to have the endorsement of the historic commission.
I, I think that should be the Historic Preservation Committee.
Is, is that what it's called in town?
Yep.
I think it's committee, not commission.
I think that's what I said.
Yeah, you did, but it's written commission.
And would that eligibility strictly be? What is it based on? I mean, strictly its age or is it the whole acreage and all that's described prior?
I think, you know, Wayne, I, I really believe strongly this is something that the historic, Historic Preservation, now you got me confused, Committee should, should decide at this point, you know, before anything goes any farther with this.
Well, I mean, it can be written in if, that they're the, that they're part of, of how we evaluate whether it is or is not a historic building or property. But I wonder what the parameters are for them to make that designation. Because there, there has to be, and I guess there is, language that says of a certain year that it was built and of a certain acreage. So would that be debatable? Or is it better to have a list of these properties out in front of us?
I think it's better to have a list and for the Historic Preservation Committee to, to create the list and, and post it. And we can include it by reference in this bylaw.
I mean, I don't, I think a reason to have a list is because my sense is that people are really tired of anticipating these commercial impacts in their next door yards. And I think it would just be good to have this established so that the town can go back to not thinking about these potential impacts in their backyards.
Well, it, it may be that the Historic Preservation Committee comes up with a list that has properties that have a butters. I mean, that's, I, I, I'm suggesting that.
I'm not saying that there won't be a butters. I'm just saying, I think it's, it's time to have a concrete list and have that be established so that.
I agree.
People know where they stand. I mean, I'm going to tell you, Jeff, that when we had the zoning review committee, I did talk to our town council, who's a fellow by the name of Ray Mieres a couple of times. And what Ray told me was that when he came on board with the town, which was right around the time that our zoning bylaw was being introduced. At that time, he warned the town officials, select board, probably planning board, that he felt they were going to have problems with the cottage era estate bylaw. But at that point, they had already kind of gone through the process and ushered it in. And they weren't eager to turn around and redo the whole thing. So, but his comments were prescient. We have had problems.
Do you have a, you have a document from him, a review letter or something that I could look at?
No, but I do know that Joel spoke with him.
Ray Mieres, I've, I've dealt with him in the past.
Have you?
Yes.
Yeah. Now, he's, he's sort of semi-retire, retiring at this point. So our town council is someone named Donna, Donna Brewer, but she is with the firm.
Is that like Pickett and Mieres?
Mieres Harrington.
Harrington, yeah.
Pickett and Mieres was what I dealt with. See, my worry here with this approach is, you know, the approach where you don't know what you've got until you go to the Historic Preservation Committee and, and you then go to the planning board and, and they have to endorse that, endorse that endorsement, is that the zoning is not clear enough about where it, where it ends up. And that could be construed as what they call floating zone in Massachusetts, which is not, not permitted.
What is it called, Jeff?
Floating zone.
Floating zone?
And a floating zone is a zone that floats above your town. And then when certain circumstances occur, it comes down and lands on a parcel. So you never know where it's gonna, you never know where it's going to apply until, until things happen. So, you know, for the most part, you, you're, you're supposed to show all your zoning on your zoning map. Ideally, these cottage era estate properties would be showing up on your zoning map. You know, they'd all be in yellow or something, and you'd know just where this would apply. That involves making a list and, and getting them onto the map. So there, there's, there's two approaches here. There's, there's this one where you don't have to, you don't have to do the, the, the list right up front and you can review them individually as they come in. And if the Historic Preservation Committee and/or the planning board don't agree that this is a bona fide cottage era estate, things not going any further here. You know, you can, you can essentially kill them off here if, if the property is not, is not worthy.
Jeff, what, what, I don't see the problem if, you know, very soon after this bylaw is passed, we ask the Stockbridge Historic Preservation Committee to specifically identify in writing those properties that qualify under this definition of cottage era estate. To list them, actually put them on a piece of paper. As you say, put them on the zoning map and give them a color code. And, and then it's, that's the list.
Why wouldn't you do that from the get-go?
Yeah, okay, good. Do it from the get-go. I'm just saying.
Well, why would you wait until after something's passed? I mean, people need to be able to plan.
The important point, Kate, is get it down on a list. And yeah, do it tomorrow, but get it down on a list so that we, we know what we're dealing with and all property owners know what they're dealing with. And it's not a matter of, is this a cottage era estate or not? If, if the Historic Preservation Committee says it is, then it is. And, and, and maybe this language that the planning board shall review the endorsement and informally indicate its acceptance or rejection, that gives us some discretion that maybe we don't want. If it's on the list, it's, it qualifies, full stop.
Exactly. Just make it really clear. The more you clear, you can make it, the better. And Jeff, another thought I have is that, granted, I was looking at the wrong copy before the meeting, but the copy I was looking at is like 18 pages. You know, it's combined with the natural resource protection zoning and it, it just seems so long and so confusing. And I, I would recommend separating these two bylaws out. Cottage era and the natural resource protection zoning.
This, this bylaw that we're looking at is one, two, three, four, five pages and one line long.
Oh.
It doesn't include the natural.
Bill, this is designed to go at the tail end of.
No, I understand. I think you were saying, yeah, it's five pages, section H is five pages long.
Yeah. Because it's the most persnickety of, of, of anything in here. So yeah, it, it gets a long section.
But it's combined with the, with, combined with the other bylaw, it's like 18 pages long. Is that correct?
Well, maybe in its existing form. I, I find the, the NRPPZs that I do end up at about nine pages. And then you put five more on here, you'll have 14.
Yeah, I just, look, this is a comment I'm making. I think they should be separated out for clarity. It's just too confusing. I'm hearing from people that have looked at the drafts, that they're finding it very confusing. Based on my experience, my nine years on the planning board, I feel that this is going to, this is going to be very, very difficult for people to work with if they're not separated out.
You know, we talked about this. We've talked about it more than once. And I thought it was the consensus of the planning board that we incorporated into, and that we have one bylaw with a cottage era.
Remember, I know it was definitely your opinion that should happen, Bill.
Not mine alone.
I'm expressing my, I'd like to express my opinion here. And, you know, I haven't been able to attend the past two meetings. So I'd like to express my, my opinion here and I respectfully ask that I be able to do that.
You just did.
Bill, can I speak?
Yeah.
Bill, I, I think a couple of meetings ago, I know, I, I think I would prefer to see these separated. I think it's, I think they're two different items. I, I'm having difficulty joining one with the other. For what it's worth. But while I'm, while I'm at it, Marie, I'm sorry.
No, I'm sorry.
The parameters by which the Historic Commission would establish these as cottage estate bylaws. Are, will they, will we ask them to use the definition that's within the previous existing bylaw? How, how, I mean, if there's some that we say, well, geez, we agree or we don't agree? Or is that going to be the end of it? Their, their decision is the end of it? I'm just curious what their parameters will be.
There'll be the parameters that I guess they, they establish in accordance with this bylaw.
I think the town needs to be involved with making that determination as to what the criteria was going to be, which was the language that was put in this bylaw of ask, you know, working with the Historic Preservation people because there could be, besides a, a state of a parcel of land that has a really interesting historic building or a building that has some importance to the town that may not meet the criteria that we are talking about here. And that creates, then what happens? Do we, how do we treat that property? And I think the reason that we put the two bylaws together was so that there was some opportunity to do a, a development that had a historic building on it, maintain that building and then allow some other development on the property in areas like what Randall was showing. And in his slide presentation, he tried to present that those kinds of mixed uses have some ability to work. And so that is my understanding of why Joel and we have been discussing this. And I don't know how we could go out now and say to any commission, give us a list of potential properties. Just, you know, I guess we could get it just based on the buildings, but then are we going to be redoing this bylaw every time one comes up because it doesn't meet the other criteria? So I think there are a lot of loose ends here that we need to really think about long-term as we're trying to address this. But maybe if Jeff went through what he has written, instead of going from the front to the back and then back again, would make the whole bylaw a little clearer and answer a lot of questions.
One, one quick thing on that before Jeff speaks. I think these traditional subdivision, Christine, is so much different than what's, what could be proposed at a cottage estate. That's why I think they need to be separate because there are different needs and there's different circumstances surrounding those two, those two ideas.
Well, the, the reason, the reason the cottage era is a part of the NHRPZ bylaw is because the NHRPZ will, will secure a substantial amount of open space in the project using its methodology to, to do that. And it will also spit out a, a number that you can use for residential development density. And it will give you, it will give you a developable area too. So a lot of what you need to know about these, these parcels, I mean, what's going to be conserved? Where, where and how much land can be developed? And at least how many residential units can go on there is all determined in that, that front part. Sections A through G. This is more specific to what goes on that developed portion. If it's going to be a cottage era estate, something or other, not a residential subdivision. Then that's where this kicks in because it's, it's, it's not going to be just house lots and streets. It's going to be something else.
So, but Jeff, I just so clearly remember at your first meeting, you had recommended that there be two different bylaws. So what was your thinking then? And why has it changed?
I, I, I was looking at the drafts I had of each and I was adding them up and I was seeing a monstrously long bylaw. And since then, it's, it's, I've, I've, I've kind of wanted to put them together because they're inexorably linked. You can't do a cottage era unless you're doing it under the NHRPZ.
Why? Why can't you?
Well, because you wouldn't have any open space requirements. You wouldn't have the conservation analysis and findings process. You wouldn't be able to formulaically arrive at a, at a number of, of units.
Why couldn't that all be included in a separate bylaw? They might not be the same percentages though.
Well, then you have, then you have two long bylaws. Maybe they're separate, but they're both going to be nine to 10 pages long. Here, we have a little bit of economy of scale because much of, much of the work, of the site work is done up in sections A through G. And then H, the five pages that are going to be in H, just deal with the particulars of the cottage era estate development area. So it's, it's a little more. So it's, it's a little more efficient than having two sort of freestanding bylaws that do a lot of this, a lot of the same things.
That argument is why it persuaded me to combine them. But if the consensus of the planning board is that we should separate them, I think despite the inefficiencies that Jeff has just described, then we should, we should ask him to separate them.
Well, I did not hear that argument before and it has made an impression on me. And thank you for that, Jeff. I, I would like to think about it and study these. I was looking at the Ron, the draft for March 10th, so I would sort of, I personally would like to think about it some more and take a, take a look at the draft that we're working on today closely.
Jeff, what would you like to focus on next?
Why don't we go through the flow of the draft?
Okay.
From, from top to bottom.
Okay. By the way.
We're starting, Jeff, at the top of this, this file labeled T E combo?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Jeff.
Well, no format, draft number two.
Got it.
Jeff, before you proceed, there's kind of a threshold question or a, sorry, one threshold question. And that is, why should the, I'm just pulling it up. Why should the, I'm trying to find it. What is the justification for, no? Hold on. What is the planning board's rationale for taking the special permitting authority away from the select board? Wouldn't that eliminate oversight and have the planning board mon- modern, monitoring itself?
Planning board, you are an elected planning board?
We are.
Your, your oversight are the voters and in town. And it's, it's very uncommon to have boards of, of select persons do things like this when they don't regularly do it. I mean, this is the, this is the work of a, of a planning board or a zoning board. You know, special permits are not the bailiwick of, of a select board, that, that's kind of rare. And, and select boards should be thankful for that. It's no fun, that's why they have planning boards and zoning boards.
In Stockbridge, the select board has always been involved with special permitting, Jeff, and I feel that that has done the town, that has done well by the town. And I would like to see the balance of power, I disagree with, with having this fully with the planning board because our meetings are, until now, they were never televised except for on rare occasions. And really, there was, there was very, very low visibility. So the select board meetings at least are televised and there's, there's more visibility. So I feel strongly that the select board should be involved.
Yeah, I have written them in and, and we'll see that. You know, they're, they're in the, the group of boards that, that get informed about things and get invited to comment and participate in site visits and things like that. But the special permit granting authority is, is the planning board and I, you know, for larger projects like this, I would always recommend planning board. I mean, you, planning boards do subdivisions, they involve a lot of land, access roads. More so than zoning boards, zoning boards often work on smaller projects, individual homes that might be non-conforming and need to add a something or other, but it's planning board that, that works in the large scale, larger scale projects. So I'll, I'll change it to whatever you, you want politically, but my recommendation is planning board.
Jeff, how many meetings or hours in some of the projects that you have been involved with? Does it take to get just the natural resource historic preservation zoning bylaw enacted with the way that there's all of the public comment and that kind of thing? Because I was looking at one permit, I think it was for North Andover and very well laid out, but it took 18 months to complete the process. So I'm wondering if you've had different experiences about how many hours the boards are, are spending in doing this review and understanding that the select board has an awful lot of other responsibilities to manage the town.
Well, I, I've been involved myself, I'm, I'm a 25 year member of my own planning board and a 10 year member of my zoning board. And I mean, we did a solar special permit a couple of years ago that consumed my life for two years. We were, we were down to meeting every week on that. We did a couple of NRZ projects, those were, those were much better feeling projects because of all the land that was being preserved. But again, you know, a lot of details, a lot of land assessment and trying to figure out where, where houses should go and interpreting the zoning. A lot of field work. So, yeah.
So just as an FYI, Jeff.
Would be a lot of work for, for any board that, that took it on.
Yeah, so just as an FYI, Jeff, our special permits on the planning board are almost always done in one public hearing.
In 10 minutes.
What was that? I, I, I was dealing with a computer problem, what was that that you said?
So I was just as an FYI, letting you know that the planning board's special permits, if you look at our zoning bylaw, you'll see that the bulk of our work is in the Lake and Pond overlay district. And the bulk of those special hearings are open and done within one meeting. And Christine added 10 minutes.
Not quite that bad, but they're not anywhere near as complicated as what these, dealing with a whole parcel of land and all of the issues that are involved with that require, just starting with the first step of identifying the open space and thinking about that and having the, everyone in and have the consultations can take oh, quite a few months to make sure that you get it right. And that is a huge time commitment. And then you have to make sure that you go through each step. So I think that there's a lot to think about as to the special permit granting authority. But this is also site plan review and it has some different criteria. So anyway, Jeff, we haven't really started to go through the bylaw and I think you need to do that so we, people have an idea of what we're talking about.
Why don't we go through it with an eye towards whether, whether your chief executive officers, your select board should be doing this or your planning board? That's pretty much elected to do this. So.
So Jeff, before you start, can you kind of like, where possible, as you go through this, just state what you've changed since the last version?
Where I can remember, yes.
There's, there's no comments here, so.
No, I, I didn't want to give you comments and I didn't want to give you a crazy document that, that had red lines and strikeouts. You can take this document and you can do a, a document compare. You can compare it to Joel's, you can compare it to what you have existing.
Oh, so Joel's was the basis for what you, you started with here?
No, well, his, his was and what you have. So you, you're going to find some stuff from Joel, you're going to find some stuff that, that you currently have and you're going to find new stuff from me.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so the, the first is just the purpose. And let's see. I think I took this first paragraph from what you have and you're existing, and I think I took this from Joel. Maybe trimmed it down a little bit. And it sort of tells you what you're looking for. Historic buildings and landscapes inherited from the turn of the 20th century, Gilded Age, 1870, 1920. Sort of tells you why you're doing this. Because really what this is, is a, th- 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 these are, are zoning bonuses. Ability to do development you might otherwise not be able to do in exchange for preserving these estates and their grounds in somewhat their, their pristine condition or restored condition. So that's the purpose, kind of a trade off.
Question for you, why did you add, it used to be employment opportunities for town residents? And you added an area residence, what does that mean?
Oh, because not everybody's going to be from town. You know, the, the, the area itself is, is, is probably going to benefit. And Stockbridge is not an island.
We provide a lot of opportunity, employment opportunities currently.
Well, we can't restrict employment to town residents only for something like this.
By not putting that in, you're not restrict, restricting employment opportunities?
Well, if you say for town residents, it implies it's for town residents and it isn't, it's really for town and area residents. We know people will come from Lee or Great Barrington or.
Not sequential at this point.
Yeah, it's, let's go on.
Go on, go on. Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm, I'm going to look for you for a little guidance here to help me figure out whether we've discussed something sufficiently or not.
Okay.
Implacability applies to those property containing the estates described in the section below, which now has this process with the Historic Preservation Commission. And it, it just tells you that offers alternative options for development not otherwise permitted. Flexibility, regulatory requirements for development in exchange for securing the preservation of historic structures, grounds and associated undeveloped open spaces. So this is kind of the, this is kind of the deal here. And then just a, a formality, doesn't change the zoning for projects that don't use its provisions. Planning board hereby authorize special, grant a special permit here. Such development may include uses not permitted in the underlying zoning district. Hold on, I just had another computer problem. Combination of uses may be permitted subject to the maximum unit count and other requirements here set forth. Such uses may include but not lim- but not be limited to. I added this but not or limited to because you, you can never really, you can never really peg every last thing that might be proposed. Because things are changing all the time. But you have a special permit, so you're not going to get bowled over if it's, if it's inappropriate.
Jeff, I'm sorry, question, when you, question when you get a second.
Sure, right now.
That upper section, I think that trade off is the precise reason why the bylaw was created in the first place, these huge properties that can no longer sustain themselves without some other form of taking in money to, to, to take care of themselves is why I think this needs to be worded differently than an open space bylaw. This was created specifically so these large estates wouldn't go away and they have a way to sustain themselves.
Right. So here's a list of, of, of the things that are contemplated. It's not exhaustive though. All residential.
Jeff, I just have a quick question about that section B above. So basically that means that by special permit, section A can be completely negated.
No.
Well, you, it says this subsection does not change the requirements of the zoning for projects that do not use its provisions.
Yeah, I, I mean, this is almost superfluous, but it, it, it simply says that, you know, these cottage era estates, as described, however we come up with it, whether it's a list or, or an endorsement from the historic commis- committee, are the properties that it pertains to. And it just makes it clear this subsection doesn't change requirements for projects that do not use its provisions. So there's only, there's only a limited set of properties that are able to use the provisions herein. And those are the ones that the, that will be subject to it and the zoning stays the same for everything else.
Right, but does it, so by special permit, does that mean that any use goes within that location?
Yes, part of the special permit is permitting uses that might ordinarily not be permitted in that district.
So it could be a bar or a beauty salon or anything.
It, it could be what's listed here or maybe something that's proposed and is deemed to be acceptable. So, so this is, it's a list of, of, of some things, most of them are, are fairly, you know, that, I found them in your bylaws. They fairly well go with these kinds of places, I guess. All residential and non-residential uses allowed in the zoning district, the Stockbridge zoning bylaws. Everything you allow in there anyway, that you have listed for the R2 or the R4 could be proposed here. And then Joel listed out a number of different forms of housing, cottage court, co-housing, townhouse, accessory apartments. Somebody asked about condominiums, so I, condominium is not anything more than an ownership regime, not a physical form. But I did say including condominium, condominium ownership regimes or other forms of alternative housing. So the range of housing is, is, is wide. Open space recreational use, I'm not sure exactly what that is, that's already provided for somewhere in your bylaw, section four. But, but it, it was in this list. Hotel or restaurant where food is served primarily for consumption within the building is provided in blah, blah, blah. Tavern bar associated with a restaurant. This just stopped here, it said tavern bar, I added associated with a restaurant. And you'll have to decide about that, I don't know whether you want a freestanding tavern or bar or do you want something that's actually part of a restaurant? Maybe a little, a little tamer type of a place. Commercial greenhouse, nursery or landscape gardening is provided in, this was already there. Agriculture, viticulture, horticulture, floriculture, satifying requirements, section blah, blah. Conference and retreat facilities. See, these are the biggies here, some of these other ones are pretty passive. You know, the kind of stuff that are, that are biggies are. Including facilities for private parties and weddings. Art, music, dance or fitness studio, I added fitness studio. Studio where artists can work, display their art. Greatest dates in, I highlighted that because I. Greatest dates in, I highlighted that because I don't know whether you're going to keep that. I'm going to do here what I did down there. Put a line through it. Resort. And then they get into some specifics. Defined group of buildings with sleeping rooms for 20 or more transient guests. Food service in a public dining room, indoor/outdoor recreational facilities, and a range of activities and amenities intended to provide two guests permanently onsite for the duration of their stay. So this is a biggie too, meaning a resort is certainly something if it goes next to somebody's house. And you have this uses permitted in the business B district. I'm not sure what that is, other than those already allowed in subsections above. Provided that such uses shall not occupy more than 15% of the floor area in the entire development. This came from, this came from Joel. So I'm not exactly sure what these uses are and why they should be limited to 15%. Does anybody have any recollections? If I can pursue this further.
I have no recollection of why that number is what it is.
Okay.
Is that smaller than you would normally think?
Well, there's it limits it to 15% of the floor area in the entire development. I mean, that's hard to figure out, including all the residential that you're going to have there, all those floor areas? Are you just considering non-residential floor areas? See, these are businesses. Is it 15% of the business area or is it 15% of the, all the area being developed? Okay. Bear with me here, I'm trying to Okay, now the eligible properties. And here we still have to figure out what we're doing. We're doing the historic commission process, planning board list. What are we doing here?
Yeah, I think that
Historic Preservation Committee, Jeff.
Yeah, I think we we've been over this and I think this does need tightening up. I'd prefer not to have the planning board have discretion to accept or reject it. If it's on the list, it's a cottager estate and it's subject to this bylaw. If it's not, it's not a cottager estate and it's subject to the rest of the bylaw.
I would just be curious again, what parameters they'll use to identify that?
Okay, so are you wanting to, you wanting to cut this?
So Patrick has provided the information on that section you were asking about, Jeff. Do you want me to read it out loud or do you want to take a look at the chat? It says some things allowed in the business district. Research laboratory or light manufacturing activity where the major portion of the product is retailed on the premises or by mail.
Hold on. Hold on, my battery's running low here for some reason.
Oh, and he's also listing cemetery and funeral homes.
Okay, we're going back up here to this. Let's see, where are we going? We're going here. So
And then solar, commercial solar photovoltaic installations.
Okay. This somehow found it in here. Are these the kinds of things that are appropriate for these?
Oh, marijuana, marijuana retailer.
Your business B district.
Look, I mean, I don't want to live next to these places myself.
So can you go over some of the uses again, please?
Sure, he's got some things allowed in the business district. Research laboratory or light manufacturing activity where the major portion of the product is retailed on the premises or by mail. Cemetery and funeral homes. Commercial solar photovoltaic installations, RMD retailer. Anything else, Patrick? Oh, temporary use of a mobile home for living purposes while a permanent dwelling is actively under construction on the same lot for a period not exceeding six months, subject to the approval of the Board of Health, provided off-street parking requirements and yard requirements are met. Mobile home of a type intended only for camping purposes stored within sight of a public way in excess of 30 days in any calendar year provided it is not for living purposes.
Yeah, who's going to monitor that? I wonder, can we eliminate this whole section, this whole section 12, Roman numeral 12? Why do we have to allow outside of the business district?
Personal wireless service facility is regulated in section 6.25 of this bylaw.
Yeah, why do we have to allow things going on in the business district outside of the business district? Other than the ones enumerated above, resort, restaurant attached to a hotel or bar attached to a restaurant, those kinds of things. But do we need to allow mobile homes and marijuana distribution outside of the business district? I think not.
Aren't some of those suggestions about a possible little general store, some kind of central area in that common area that would accommodate some sort of small business like that, as I recall?
Where, Wayne?
Well, in that hotel area or in a proposed hotel area or in a common area that there was sundries for, I don't know, I just recall that part of that was, we weren't limiting it to that, but some other businesses could, I don't recall exact details.
I mean, I think a hotel would normally expect to be able to have a little shop to sell toothpaste to people who forgot their toothpaste and a little memorabilia, you know, things with logos on it. But I just, I
And in the business district, right?
Yeah, the business district, anything that goes in the business district, I think should stay in the business district. That's, that's sort of where I'm coming from because why would we want to permit? What are some of these other things? Mobile homes, RMDs, solar farms, anywhere other than where they're permitted today? I just don't see the point.
Well, why would you want to permit a conference center anywhere other than it's permitted today?
Because often a conference center is part of a resort. In fact, many resorts have conference facilities.
Yeah, I think this business district thing can just be eliminated, like you said, Bill.
All right, so for right now, I'm going to leave it out of here.
Cross it, yeah.
All right. So now we're down back to eligible cottager estate properties. And we've taken planning board discretion out of it. We've left it up to the Stockbridge Historic Preservation Committee. And we need to think about whether that's going to be ad hoc as they come in or whether that's going to require them to work with you now to develop the list.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so we talked about that enough, I guess. So number three, required pre-application process. So it's required. Pre-application meeting, this is similar to what Joel had in here. So prior to the special permit application, applicant shall meet with the planning board, discuss the process of formulating a proposal and spinning it for review. At the meeting, the prospective applicant provide a copy of the Historic Commission's endorsement of the property and a narrative description of the proposed project to inform the planning board of the intended development and preservation goals of the application. Planning boards will determine whether the proposed application will also require subdivision approval and other special permits. So if it's also a subdivision, you can identify it as such and make sure they know that they have to come in to that as well. And if they're looking for waivers or if they're looking for density bonuses or some other things, you'll be able to peg that and make sure they know they need special permits for those as well. And if it's a cottage era type thing, this is when you'll tell them about section H. So after the pre-application meeting, the applicant shall prepare a conservation analysis as described in subsection B above. This is all the way back up in the NHRPZ section. And normally it gets submitted later, but here you're going to have it up front. Designed to assist the town, the applicant determine which features the property should preserve or restore where development or new development can occur with the least impact on historic ecological and scenic resources. Conservation analysis shall additionally identify, describe, and evaluate the following site features in addition to the requirements of 410 in the Stockbridge subdivision regulations. So get rid of that. So here's, here's what they're going to have to do in addition to a normal conservation analysis. They're going to have to show structures, including both historic and nonhistoric structures, existing driveways, roads, utilities, fences, septic systems, wells, drainage, related improvements, landscaping features, areas used for agriculture, gardens, other man-made landscape features, vegetation types and identification of trees rated in 12 inches in diameter, photography and NRCS soils in a general manner. General manner that doesn't involve expensive surveying at this point. An aerial photo showing the property boundaries and the relationship of the subject property to surrounding properties. So you can tell a lot from aerial photo because it shows the property, the property line, and then it shows where anything else is around or near it. Any other special or valued site features identified by the planning board at the pre-application meeting. So you can ask for other things to be included in this conservation analysis. So then it's submitted and you're reviewing it. Shall submit sufficient numbers to, of the conservation analysis to the planning board, which shall transmit copies of it to the select board, historic preservation committee. Historic Preservation Committee, Board of Health and Conservation Commission for review and discussion. Do you think of any others here? That will be interested in this?
That's a good list.
Okay. Planning board shall conduct a site visit to the property and shall invite members of the boards listed above to join the site visit. Planning board shall discuss with the applicant which portions should be preserved in substantially their current condition, which should be restored, renovated, or enhanced, and which can be demolished, redeveloped, or developed for the first time. After which the planning board shall make conservation findings in accordance with section B above. This is all a process up above that applies to any NHRPZ project. Conservation findings shall be the basis for planning and development, preservation, and redevelopment of the property is later reflected in any application for a special permit under this subsection H. So this is where you're still in an informal, a required, but an informal process.
So Jeff, I would switch the order of C and D.
Yeah, I was playing with that. But what do you guys think?
They're both required.
I don't think it should be switched because what do we have to show the public if we haven't looked at everything with everybody else first?
So I'd have to change it during the review in D.
It's in conjunction. They go together and I think the order matters.
But doesn't that make sense that we would have that information before, you know, a public meeting?
Just priority and emphasis.
But it's not, it's not a done deal. I tend to agree. I think the conservation analysis comes first and then the consultation. And the consultation might result in the conservation analysis being adjusted somehow.
Or we reject it.
Well, this consultation with neighborhood in town is
Oh, I see. You've already changed it.
Yeah, is during this review, right? So during the review in D below, planning board shall hold one or more public advertised informal meetings with the boards listed above, publicly notice parties in interest of the property. So you're going to have to send out a notice to all your parties in interest, which are abutters and abutters to abutters within 300 feet, as well as other interested town residents to review the conservation analysis.
If they can't, they can't review it, it hasn't been done.
Right.
I think D has to come before C.
Yes.
The conservation analysis comes before the consultation with neighborhood in town.
The wording is really clear. It says during the review in C or in this case D, during the review, the planning board shall hold one or more publicly advertised informal meetings, et cetera.
Maybe it should be, they should be combined then.
Sure.
Is there a way to combine them together? Without being extravagantly long?
Yeah.
Bill.
All right, so I won't belabor it. I'll just combine them.
Okay.
There we go. That tells me I have to do something. So it'll probably say review of conservation analysis backslash consultation with neighborhood in town. And then it'll be all of this text. So it'll all go together.
I guess the reason I asked for that, I can't remember who was opposed to it, Wayne, is that we are basically, we are imposing impacts on people who may not welcome them. I realize you may not agree with that, but there are plenty of people who may not welcome these commercial impacts. And I think that everything needs to be done to accommodate the concerns of people who have invested a lot in this town.
Not forcing anything on anybody. That's why I just think the more information that's in front of them when they actually do evaluate it, the better.
Right, and I think that the wording, the order matters because it's important to reassure in as much as it's possible under these circumstances, it's important to reassure abutters. People do care about their property values.
Sure they do. I just think the more information they have in front of them as they make these decisions, the better they're going to be and the more comfortable they're going to be. We're taking due diligence to make sure the environment's protected, but it's all combined now. It's fine. We're taking due diligence to make sure the environment's protected, but it's all combined now, it's fine.
I think it might be done here.
We'll leave it to you to, you've painted it red, you'll fix it.
I know what you want. Okay.
Good.
We're on the special permit review process. So, you know, much of what you do in special permits is governed by state law, and doesn't need, every little step doesn't need to be rehashed here in your zoning bylaw. Everybody's got to follow Chapter 48, Section 9, special permits. There's 20 steps, 20 steps in a special permit. That's another reason the select board shouldn't want to mess with this kind of stuff. Public notice, public hearing, timelines for decisions, appeals, all kinds of stuff. So, anyway, it doesn't all have to be rehashed here. So, the first what it does, procedure for review, special permit, in Section H shall be set forth in Section 6.3, which is your special permit section, which already lays it out. Findings required for approval under this 6.6 shall include not only those listed in 6.3.6, but also the approval criteria listed in 6.6H8 below. Okay. All right, so that takes care of H, which is special. This is your generic special permit approval criteria. This is the special Section H cottage era estate criteria, which we added down below. Okay, so this, this is pretty much what you have now. Site plan prepared, pursuant to 6.3H shall be required. Application under this section 6.6, whether or not they contain a non-residential use. So this is site plan required for all uses. All development or redevelopment involving new construction within 500 feet of the principal historic structure is certified by the Historic Preservation Committee. Or, change in the exterior of any existing building shall require facade elevation drawings from every facade elevation that is being changed or redesigned, showing such proposed changes or new design. Each change or new element and all new materials should be clearly identified on the elevation. So, I took this from Joel. You know, if you're going to be within 500 feet of the principal historic structure, or if you're going to change the exterior of any existing building, need to submit elevations and and new materials, so planning board can see just how that's being done, and the Historic Commission Committee as well. And this is something I don't think you have in your, I looked for it, I didn't see it in your bylaw now. This enables you to employ consultants to help you in this review.
Good.
And you probably, you probably want them.
Yes.
4453G, so you have this in here now, and that will enable you to do that.
Good.
And the applicant pays for it. So.
So I'm just going to read a comment, if I may. Jeff, and that's from Patrick White. If we encourage three to four new hotels in town, what happens to the Red Lion Inn, whose business is already under stress? What plans do you have to protect Main Street and Stockbridge's iconic inn?
I'm sorry, Kate, I have to say, we can't talk about that right now, it's not an unimportant issue, but if we don't progress on this, we're not going to get through this document tonight.
Point well taken, point well taken.
Patrick, it's a good question, but we have to address it another time.
You're absolutely right.
Okay. Long live the Red Lion Inn and its basement taproom. Anyway, residential unit count. So, this is new stuff, and this is a way to take, take the number that gets generated from the formulas for the property, which in the Desisto case cranked out 28 to 38 units, and turn them into something that could be applied in a project like this where you may not have just single-family dwellings. You could have any number of smaller dwellings, or condos, or townhouses, or things like that. Now, how do you take your 38 and turn it into something you can work with here? So, development proposed under H may include any mix of the types and allowed residential dwellings listed up above. Number of individual dwellings allowed is based on the maximum number of units as calculated in subsection D above, these are the formulas. Each unit so calculated is equivalent to four allowed bedrooms, four-bedroom house. So, 38, single-family dwellings, four bedrooms apiece. 38 times four equals 152, so 152 bedrooms to work with. The allowed number of bedrooms may be distributed in accordance with the following sliding scale. So, 152, so for each studio or one-bedroom dwelling, you've got a quarter of one unit. Two-bedroom dwelling, half a unit. Three-bedroom, .75. Four-bedroom dwelling, one unit, because that was, that was my basis. Each one of those 38 would have four bedrooms. That's kind of the average single-family dwelling these days, and you know, the kind of high-end single-family dwellings are all four bedrooms. And then, any dwelling of more than four bedrooms, one unit plus .25 per additional bedroom.
Jeff, so does this suggest that, in, again, using Desisto, if he had a lot of studios or one-bedrooms, he could have four times as many of those as he did four-bedroom houses?
Yeah.
And that number 38 could be considerably higher.
All right, I did the calculation for Desisto, and I don't want to perseverate on Desisto, but at least we're all familiar with it, and and I did a calculation on it. So, by my calculation, for that whole piece of property, there's 152 bedrooms. 38 units, four bedrooms a unit, 152 bedrooms. So then I looked at the Desisto proposal, and there are, there are 34 single-family dwellings proposed on the back, and then 139 condominiums in the front. And I multiplied it out, and I assumed that each single-family dwelling, this is conservative, would have three bedrooms. And I assumed that each condo would have two bedrooms. So, 34 single-family dwellings at three bedrooms each, 139 condominiums at two bedrooms each. And that comes to 380 bedrooms. But the formula only gives you 152 bedrooms. So, the current proposal for Desisto could not work under the way this is written, with these numbers. They
Jeff.
They have less than half of their residential capacity. And that doesn't mean that some of the other components of that proposal wouldn't work. You know, the restaurant, the hotel, things like that could work, but the amount of residential would be limited by this.
So if it is a combination of hotel and residences like Canyon Ranch, do these counts offset the number of hotel rooms?
No. No. These are just, these are residences that would either be owned, or timeshared, or condominiumized, you know, these are private residences, not hotel rooms, or restaurant seats, or anything else.
Yeah, I'm really having trouble visualizing this, can you do a a plan, like those, some of those other plans you showed us?
Do you want me to hold up the Desisto proposal? And
I think we have to be really careful that we keep talking about Desisto, and we probably should just talk about a parcel in town because we don't want to get ourselves into a position where we are, people think that we are specifically working on that project, and there are other properties in town where this could be applied. So can we just start talking about a parcel, or a 300-acre parcel, or something, but not put a name with it?
The only problem with that, Christine, is that we are familiar with that.
I understand, and we can be familiar with it, but let's not say the name so much because I think it could come back and haunt us in the future.
Okay, I did another calculation here, and if you want to see how this would affect Desisto, it would probably take away all of the development in the rear, the single-family dwellings, and would allow, if you think of them as two-bedroom, two-bedroom condominium units, here, near the main house, right behind the main house, it would allow for 76 of those units, 76 two-bedroom condominium units, instead of 139. So they'd lose everything in the back, and they'd get only 76 out of the 139 upfront.
So would those 76 units be townhouses? What would that look like?
They would be, they would be, they could be townhouses. They list them here as condominium unit. Again, condominium is an ownership regime, not a development form. So they could be townhouses, apartments, cottage courts, as long as the bedroom count added up to no more than 152.
Can you hold up that Desisto plan again, so I can see where exactly that would, where that would be?
Yep. Let me get a decent-sized picture. So here's Desisto, and this is the back part.
Wow, yeah.
So, you wouldn't, well, you could, you could probably, you could probably build all of that, but then you wouldn't be able to build much of anything here, residentially, upfront. Or if you got rid of all this in the back, you'd have enough for 76 condominium units upfront.
Jeff, why wouldn't you constitute one building unit as a building unit for a family, instead of for a bedroom? Isn't a, isn't a building unit supposed to hold a family?
Yeah, but, but what we're trying to do is, we're trying to take the 38, the number 38 that we calculated for that land, that would normally apply to a residential subdivision, you know, how this bylaw, the front part of this bylaw would work mostly on residential subdivisions, and you would get 38 single-family dwellings to build on this property. But you're coming in under H, so you're not going to do a residential subdivision, you're going to do one of these, these cottage era projects. And you may not have just single-family dwellings, you might have all kinds of other types of housing with different numbers of bedrooms. So, all this does is take 38 times four bedrooms each, and allow you to divvy it up in other ways because your development form is going to be different.
I just don't get where the number of bedrooms falls into place, it just seems like it should be a family dwelling unit that is counted. And that's the reason I think this needs to be a different section, is because the density, I think, needs to be more. If this is going to be, I mean, you're cutting, I don't know, more than half out of that, and whether that's doable or not for somebody, I don't know. But I'd sure like to, again, we've talked about asking others to input from that vantage point, which we have not done yet. I'm very curious about their take on what these percentages would mean to them.
Jeff, I just, I think you just validated that what Desisto was proposed was way too big and out of scale for the property, thank you.
Well, I think other members of this board have said the same thing that I've heard.
Shall we go on?
Sure, but if you want to fix this to allow some more residential units, not necessarily the amount that was proposed, because what was proposed, I don't think was based on anything, really, it was just a proposal. These numbers can be changed. Instead of having each four-bedroom dwelling count for one unit, you can have it count for half a unit, go from there. You can just, you can change the numbers to increase the overall potential here, beyond a residential subdivision. And again, the idea is that this, this is a trade-off. You're, you know, with a residential subdivision, Stockbridge has nothing to gain. Maybe a few more houses.
But isn't that spot zoning?
With this, you're trying to induce them to preserve that estate and those grounds, and you
Yeah, but you're just incrementally
The town has an interest in making it economically viable. So you may want to give them more units than they would get in the residential subdivision that doesn't have much of any benefit to the town.
And isn't, isn't that spot zoning anyway, Kate, if you're going to allow for these specific properties? I mean, in a way, I mean, but we want, we want to preserve, we want to preserve these buildings, at least I do, and also make them viable.
Well, there's a balance there, and my feeling is that one part of our economy, that the major part of our economy, that people don't seem to be thinking about is is our, you know, second and third home properties, and what that contributes to our municipal budget, and what's the impact on those property values with these types of impacts. To me, it seems like, you know, what's, what's the cost of the built environment, essentially? And that's another concern I have, is, you know, where's the cost-benefit analysis here?
But we've decided evidently to be a second homeowner community. We're almost 70% second homeowners. This, why wouldn't we take advantage of a situation that we've been building on as we go? I mean, we are what we are, this is something second homeowners would be interested in, and it falls right into what we've decided we want to be.
Not all second homeowners, and, you know, I know it may not be your interest, but I'm interested in sustainability and conservation, that's important to me, and, you know, I don't want, really want to see second homeowners leaving the area, and some of them are.
I think this invites them here, this is a second homeowner community by and large.
Remember that under this proposal, and the reason we're going this route, is because in Jeff's formula, 80% of the open space is going to be maintained for sustainability, for wildlife habitat, for all of the features that we have heard that people like about Stockbridge. So we're trying to create the kind of community that we have heard is favored by people by protecting the valuable open space, and the stone walls, and all of the features of the land that are really important, and then trying to put the housing into areas that it works, and it doesn't have a huge impact on the neighbors, et cetera. it works and it doesn't have a huge impact on the neighbors, et cetera. But I think we've really got to keep moving here.
A quick, quick question, Jeff. I mean, how, under this proposal, how big could a hotel? How, how big could a hotel be?
Okay, um, that goes down to the next section, non-residential development intensity. So I saw figures from 1.5% to 15% of, of the developable acreage or the whole acreage. I, I, I can't remember. But what I settled on here is, um, impervious non-residential uses, including buildings, pavilions, access roads, driveway, parking, athletic courts, swimming pools and walkways. Everything that's impervious, all your buildings and all your, all your, um, all of these shall not occupy more than 5% of the acreage of the whole parcel area. Roads, driveways, walkways and parking areas serviced with dirt, gravel or other, uh, in, uh, non-pavement materials should be treated as 50% in, in pervious. Got that from, from Joel. So with the DCESTO property, we all know, well, too well, out of the 320 acres, that would give you 16 to do this. So whatever you're doing, your hotels, your parking, your driveways, access roads, you've got 16 acres out of that 320. And that, that's for the non-residential component.
So then you would take any of those single-family homes and the condominiums out of that as well?
That's correct. They can go, they can go elsewhere. As long as it's on the roughly 20%, that can be developed. Again, you're preserving 80, you've got 20 and, um, 5% of, um, 5% of that, that would be 5% of, well, be 5% of the way. So it would be, uh, yeah, losing my mind here. Anyway, it's a subset of, of, of the buildable area and on, on the buildable area, you can put the number of, of residential units that you calculate up above, up above here. And you can put non-residential development such as no more than 5% of the acreage of the whole property. So that would be 16 acres in this case.
Um, uh, I hate to say this folks, but it's just after eight o'clock and the agenda had us finishing by eight.
We are very close to being done.
Well, we've got another full page and a bit, um, to get through. Admittedly, we've eliminated greatest date in. Do you want to go till 8:30 or what, what's the preference?
I'll, I'll, I'll go and, and until we've just gone through the whole thing.
You know what? I haven't had dinner. I would love to end now.
Okay. Who else wants to stay on?
Can CTSB stay on? Because I know sometimes they get backed up. Steve, are you available?
Uh, yes, I can stay on.
I think it would be good if we can keep going. I haven't had dinner yet either, but, um, I think we, this, we're into it right now. And if we lose momentum, we're not going to be able to get back to this point without spending a lot more time. So.
Should we do it in 15 minutes?
We're going to try to go till 8:30. I'm hungry too, but we'll all live. Keep going, Jeff.
Okay. The next is dimensional, um, regulations. So no specific requirements for lot area, lot width, lot frontage, yards or lot coverage. This, this remains from Joel's version, other than the aggregate limit on impervious surface, which would be 5%. Maximum height for any existing building shall be the greater of the height of the principal historic building or 35 feet. So if, if you have buildings that are, um, principal historic building is, uh, is, uh, you know, 40 feet, then, um, then you're good with 40 feet, but no new structure shall be taller than 35. This kind of legitimizes the height of, of any older structure. It can remain there and it can be rebuilt and, and reconstructed at that same height. Doesn't have to come down. Oh, and this one, the, um, this one here, the planning board may require a substantial undisturbed or planted buffer area, depending on topo and vegetation between the existing off-premises residential dwellings and any on-premises development that would be intrusive to such dwellings. I can't remember what this was worded as a required 200 feet or a 100 to 200 at the planning board's discretion.
I think we eliminated or we, we reduced that because of its, because of the requirements, uh, and the buffering. But I know, I thought you said Jeff, that 200 was a lot.
It is a lot. Um, you know, it, it, it all depends. And this is the kind of thing where, you know, good site analysis and, and, and field trips will, will tell you whether you need to impose this or not. Uh, but substantial undeserved or planted buffer. I didn't use any numbers. But substantial implies that it's much greater than most normal setbacks.
That's what you said. You, you said to leave it to the discretion at that time. That's as I recall.
Yep.
I would prefer to see that spelled out and, um, yeah.
Well, this gives us discretion. We may require it, we may not.
Exactly.
Yeah.
That's why I don't support it.
Using reasonable, re- a reasonable approach.
That's very, that's very subjective.
But Kate, if you have 200 feet on both sides of a very narrow property, you might not be able to get the kind of design that is beneficial to the environment. So by having flexibility, then you can try to design so that there is a barrier, but it's not going to cripple a project for something that would work a hundred feet might work. It depends what the abutting properties are. And so this way you can really evaluate each property. And that's the whole purpose of this bylaw is not to get hooked on any number that makes it hard to protect the environment as we move forward with revealing the development.
Let's move on.
Okay. Required additional special permit findings. So these findings are specific to this section H cottage era of projects. Basic finding, you have to find that the proposal better for, uh, serves the purposes up above than would a development of land that meets your normal zoning, um, and subdivision regulations. So just imagine what else could be done there. Maybe by easier permitting methods and ask yourself, um, is this a, a, a better project or not? And if it's a better project, then you, you can make the finding. It meets the purposes of this better. You can make the finding. The proposed use will alter existing building structures and ground to the least extent is practicable. That's from your existing one. A number of these are distinguished original qualities and character of principal building will not be destroyed. Removal will alter to stylistic features or examples of skilled craftsmanship that characterize the building will be treated with sensitivity. The planning board may refer to the Secretary of the Interior standard for rehabilitation of historic buildings, 1982. Except as specifically authorized by a special permit, no historic material or distinctive architectural feature will be removed or altered. See, all these findings give you the ability to reject one of these if, um, if, if, if you don't think this is really going to look right. And if, if, if they're not doing it right from a historic, uh, perspective, um, you can say no. Gives you, it gives you a lot of influence here. Um, and of course you can, you can consult with your historic preservation committee in, in all of these as well. Except as specifically authorized, curi-rated architectural features will be repaired rather than replaced. Event replacement is authorized. New material will match the material being replaced in composition, design, color, texture and other visual qualities. Repair replacement of missing architectural features will be based to extent practicable on accurate duplication of features substantiated by historic physical and or pictorial evidence. All off-street parking will be screened from butters in adjoining streets. Outdoor lighting will be kept to a minimum intensity needed. All outdoor lighting fixtures, um, shielded in such a manner that the edge of the lamp shield is below the light source, direct radiation glare from the light sources confined within the boundaries of the property. Direct radiation is prevented from escaping toward the sky. No high-intensity discharge lighting will be used. You know, the, the, the thing gets built and, and there's problems with lighting glare. People are irritated by it. You can go back in here and say, hey, you know, we made these findings based on what you presented to us and it hasn't turned out that way. You need to adjust your, your lighting fixtures and come into compliance with it or, um, you, you're not going to have a valid special permit anymore. Efficient water near the town water lines or onsite, um, water supplies is available. Support project, fire protection needs without adversely affecting other properties or ecosystem systems on, on or near the property. That existed from somewhere. Preservation of principal historic buildings associated features, if any, and the installation driveway service and soil and erosion control measures secured by a completion bond in our covenant approved as the form and substance by the planning board and manner of execution by the town council. Development and rehabilitation may proceed in phases and if so, the required bond or covenant shall be similarly phased. That's just bonding. This is catchall. Will meet all applicable standards set forth elsewhere in the bylaw. So that's it. That's it. I, I think with some of the things we're taking out and maybe a little bit of, um, jiggling around, this will be five pages. When we're, when we're done here.
Okay. Yeah, that is the right direction. Um, shorter is better as long as we're not compromising.
Yep.
You know, uh, accuracy and understandable and understanding.
So I, I, I think maybe you folks need to reach out to the historic, uh, preservation committee and see how capable and willing they are to, uh, give you folks a list of these properties. I mean, I mean, you could, you could run, uh, both scenarios by them that they, that, that they do an ad hoc review each time based on some criteria or they figure this out upfront.
Okay.
The, the, the danger of figuring it out upfront is if you get like three or four or five of them, then every time you want to add one, you have to have a, a zoning amendment, go through that whole process with town meeting. What, whereas if, if, if you leave it up to them to, to do a review on on, on any property that comes in, that's subject to criteria that they have, then every time a, a new property comes in, you don't have to amend your zoning bylaw.
Couldn't we write the bylaw, Jeff, um, to avoid that problem? Uh, to say the, to have them produce a list, specify which properties as we, you know, option two. As amended from time to time by the Historic Preservation Commission Committee. With, with notice to, um, a public meeting of the planning board, something like that where, where we get as far as we can with a list and, and, you know, we've avoided the dreaded problem of going before town meeting. I mean, it wouldn't be frequent. Well, if we can avoid it at all, I think we should. I don't know what would be legal, um, what the state would permit.
I, I, I can check on that. It's an interesting question.
I'd like to have some time to think about that.
Well, I think we're going to think about many aspects of this. Um, we've gone through it now for the first time with Jeff. I think we've all got some questions. I've marked up some questions of my own or, or things I want to think about. You clearly have Kate and I think others have too. I think we, uh, probably want to come back to Jeff with, um, with, with, uh, requests for, um, adjustments to, to his language where we think it's appropriate. And, uh, with a view to trying to, uh, you know, get close to, closer to a a final draft. I, I, I don't think we, we obviously didn't expect to get there tonight. Um, but I think we did make a lot of progress.
In this piece, I'm sorry, Jeff, could you send us this marked up version again? Or, or what we've marked up tonight?
Yeah, maybe you could just send it directly to it's plant, planning board at townofstockbridge.com. Or to Jennifer.
Do, do, do most of you folks get comments?
I get them.
Yeah. And I think I can get them now. Uh, Jeff, I think I, I had a, I didn't have a proper setting in my, uh, print function.
Uh huh.
Uh, so anything, if you want to start producing, you know, boxes on the side and arrows and underlinings and, uh, deletions, you can do so.
I'm, I'm heading up north for a little, little vacation tomorrow, um, getting back Friday. Would, would the weekend be too far away for this?
No, that's fine.
Well, when is the next meeting?
We haven't scheduled.
Sometime next week, we hope.
Well, it depends. If Jeff isn't coming back until the weekend to incorporate these changes, what are people's schedules and what is Jeff's timeframe? If we can get some ideas as to when people are available, that's good. And then we can go from there.
And you, you have an email to us for that purpose.
Well, maybe we should just get Jeff's availability since he's here.
I, I am pretty open next week. Later in the week is better to give me more time.
Later is better for me also.
I could do Thursday.
April Fool's Day.
Yep.
That's appropriate.
Totally.
Yeah, I, I could do Thursday.
This is people first.
Yes.
Okay. So like Thursday at five, does that work?
Five's tough for me.
That's holy Thursday. So some people may have problems. I don't know.
Can we do six o'clock?
I can.
I can do six, but Christine pointed out it's holy Thursday.
Oh.
Yeah. So I, I won't be there Thursday night.
I won't either because I'm, I'm out of town until late on Thursday. Um, but if we can get a quorum together.
Well, I think it's better if we can have more members on the phone conversation or on Zoom because then we don't go back and keep redoing things we've done at previous meetings.
Yeah, I agree. Ideally.
Yeah. How about the 31st?
I'm, I'm gone that whole week.
Oh, okay.
Except on Friday. Good, good.
I can do Friday, but that's good Friday.
That's good Friday.
What about Monday, the 5th?
Works for me.
We have a meeting the following night, if that matters.
Oh, that's right.
That does, it does to some. We obviously didn't want to push it off too long.
What about the eighth or the ninth?
It works for me.
Me too.
Me too, the eighth.
I can't do the eighth.
The ninth?
How about the ninth?
How about the 12th? I could do the 12th.
Well, that's far away though.
Yeah.
That's far out there.
Let's try to get, Christine, you've, you've sent your email out asking for availability next week. Let's see how many people can be available, including, um, Jeff. Jeff said he's pretty much available next week. And we go with who can come. I mean, I, I don't want to be the reason we wait two weeks to get, make progress on this.
I'm gone too, Bill.
Call next week?
Well, next week is. Well, next week is not good for me.
Okay, so it looks like we have to look at the first week in April and that. Is that planning board meeting on the sixth? Do we know there's a driveway, but is it a pretty light agenda?
I'm, I'm, I'm in another town that night.
Oh.
My first in-person meeting with the planning board in quite a while.
Yeah.
What was the fifth? Did people have problems with the fifth?
Well, just that it's right next to the sixth.
Oh, the day before. I got you. Never mind.
Or the seventh, um, or the eighth for that matter. I wouldn't want to go to the next week.
So why don't we do the, what was wrong with the eighth?
But you said you were busy the eighth.
Yes, Kate said she couldn't do it.
Wait a minute, I'm in the wrong week. Hold on. What was the first that you guys can't do, right?
Right.
Well, it's holy Thursday and I, I don't know about everybody's schedule, but some people have other responsibilities at night. And I think there is also a selectman's meeting and we can't both be on the same Zoom platform.
And the thirty-first doesn't work?
Bill, could you call in from wherever you are?
No.
Well, do you have to be there, Bill?
That's what I just said. I don't have to be there.
I'll be gone as well.
Yeah, but to lose two members, we'll have to redo everything. So it's almost a wasted meeting.
I wouldn't say that, Christine. I mean, I would, I would look at the uh video and uh, you know, the CTSB recording. I think, I don't know about you, Wayne, but I, I don't like to do that, but I would do it in case. I, I'm going to be with family next week and I simply can't uh, you know, in the middle of the afternoon, which is what it is in Los Angeles, I can't stand and uh phone into a, to a meeting. I'm sorry, I can't.
Is the ninth available?
I'm free the ninth.
Uh, what time?
That's a Friday.
What time works for you, Kate?
Well, I mean, I, I would rather do the um, the first, the ninth is a Friday. I'm not really dying to uh do this on a Friday night, but.
If it's done during the Thursday, um, um, before Good Friday, um, before the evening, is that, is that okay? Sometime during the day?
It's okay with me, but I don't know about others.
Yeah, daytime is tough for me. I'm
Yeah.
working, you know?
Yes, I can't, by the time I, Wayne, yeah, it doesn't work for Wayne and it's, yeah.
Do you want to set it early evening on the ninth and so we can hopefully be done, you know, like do four to six and so people still have their Friday nights?
Wayne, can you do four on, on the ninth?
Can we say five? Um, if five works, I, I would try to be there for five.
Five to uh.
Seven.
It works for me.
Me too.
Make it work.
Okay, the ninth, five to seven. If anyone gets sick, you're gonna have, will have a problem, but let's plan it and I'll let Jennifer know to put, to post it.
Okay.
Um, Jeff, there were some questions here. I'll send them to you and you can maybe uh respond. I think that there are things that um we've pretty much covered, but there's a couple of things that you can respond to.
Are there things that we should be talking about as a, as a group before we get back to Jeff? You know, certain things we wanted that we needed to decide? Would it make sense that we try to do that at our planning board meeting, at some meeting before? So that we have some answers to the things we talked about tonight?
Yeah, actually, you know, Marie, that's a great suggestion. Since we have a light agenda for the next planning board me, meeting, maybe we, it would be better just to do a marathon.
Yeah, let's, let's just see if, what, all the things that we're supposed to be deciding so Jeff can, you know, continue um and we can get forward.
Maybe we want to invite someone from the historic commission to come to our planning board meeting? Or is that too, too early? We need to really think about what we want to ask them.
I think we know what we want to ask them. Um, simply, I mean, I, I took.
No, let them see what they feel about this?
Yeah, I can, I can call somebody there and uh isn't Carl Sprague the chairman?
Yes.
I can call Carl and see what he feels about this.
That's on the sixth that you're gonna have a regular planning board?
Yeah, can you do that, Jeff?
Um, I, I have an in-person meeting on the other side of the state at seven, so probably not.
So we stick with the six o'clock or six thirty Tuesday, the sixth, regular planning board meeting on that Tuesday, the sixth.
Yeah, and there were some things we needed to discuss. We need, we needed, that Jeff needed answers from us. Um, I can't think now, but like, I don't know, he said you guys got to decide this and um maybe this is a chance we can do that and then have answers for him next time we talk with him?
Well, we.
Or, or I could, I could decide it for you and then you can, you, you could say, no, no, no. Um, you know, I, I, I could kind of run with it like I did this last time and um.
I think that's pretty efficient. It, it gives us something to shoot at.
Okay.
So, so just to confirm, we've got our regular meeting on Tuesday, the sixth at six thirty. Jeff will not be there. And uh a meeting with Jeff on Friday, the ninth at five to seven o'clock, five to seven on Friday the night with Jeff.
Yeah, but, but before your meeting on the sixth, I will get something to you.
Okay.
That, that you can, you can cogitate on.
Excellent.
Yeah, anything you want us to decide, let us know.
Yeah.
So, so Jeff, when are you going to be sending um what you have here tonight?
I'm gonna send it prior to the sixth because I, I, I need to mess with it some more.
Okay, but so we'll have it by next um.
You'll have it, you'll have it over the weekend of the um, of the um, the, the weekend right before the sixth.
Okay.
But like the third, like the third or fourth.
April third?
Yeah, third or fourth. Um, I'll, I'll, yeah, I'll finish, yeah, I'll, by that weekend, you'll have it and then you'll be able to have it for a few days before the sixth.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any other business?
Okay, just to confirm that Friday meetings at five?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Jeff, and thank you, everybody, uh, planning board members and the public. Uh, I think we got a lot done. Still got a lot of work.
Good night, everybody. Let's see, stop share. Here we go.
Good night.
Bye, everybody.